Also on the paving list, I put a copy in everybody's box. If y'all see any more that needs to be on it before we bid, and we should bid probably, what, next month, early next month? Asphalt, I can, it does need number depending on the bid price. But if y'all see any more streets y'all know that needs to be on, what I recommend doing is taking the house and loot, taking a portion of bid, whatever money we don't have, if you need another one, pay more. So, uh, so this eleven thousand feet total, if we cut it back, we can use that money for another street if it's more or needs it more. Y'all can just let me know. That's all I've got.
Uh, in addition, you talked about the hundred and seventy-three thousand out of the two-hundred thousand. Are you still looking at that shoulder machine?
Yeah. Yeah, I don't have a firm price. They said it's gonna be less than twenty-five thousand.
Okay.
So as soon as we get the price in, we'll, we'll look at it then and decide on whether we could. We can do the same thing, and we can do the same co-op.
Okay.
So we can, we don't have to bid it out like that. But, uh, it would still be under the two-hundred thousand even if we did.
Did you calculate your prices based on last year's asphalt index?
I didn't.
Okay. It'll be about the same, maybe even a little cheaper this year.
It should be either the same or costing.
Thank you, Tim.
Mike? Couple things to report on, uh, everything now to come, I mean, at the rec center, the air conditioning, everything is working, even the racket ball force now that they've got their units in, everything's been repaired as of today, it's all running like it's supposed to be running. Uh, on the splash pad, the paint for the splash pad didn't come in, not gonna be in till about one o'clock tomorrow. Talking to Tony, not real sure he gonna start it with the thread of rain coming in. We'd like to have a couple of days to get that paint down before the rain comes in. So hopefully, maybe by Monday, we can get that, that surface down, splash pad, and get it pressed up. We're still planning on opening the, the latter part of this month on the thirty, sorry, thirty.
Tell me what paint you're talking about, I'm aware of which you're talking about.
It's a, it's a pool type latex, I don't, I don't say latex, some sort of base paint that he's ordered to paint the, the pad with. We talked about it last year, because the concrete, that water's wearing on that concrete pretty good.
Okay.
So it's gonna help with that, plus we think it'll help with our core oiling, dealing with it, and concrete's, you know, it'll wear the feet out on the kids.
Yes.
So this is something that's gonna help take that.
Okay.
To do that. And, uh, he's got it ordered, he said, we're gonna come in, of course, we've got, uh, I know you got on the gym about one of those adventure things, it was kinda one of those things that they came and talked to, uh, Joanne about it, didn't really send their paperwork in, and then when I said we'll pick up trash, they were talking about it, and of course, that's the same time that we have the bike night thing, and I said, I think we can work together on that. I know y'all gonna be looking at it. Talking to her, they're gonna have about twenty-five vendors come in, businesses in Fort Payne, they're gonna set up some tents and just, you know, kinda promote their businesses and stuff, and there'll be some inflatables down there for the kids to play in, popcorn and stuff, and they're, and Ratchet probably gonna do some food, and we're also gonna have a benefit ride for Dana Wilkie that morning, uh, she's cancer, uh, has cancer, state four cancer, so we're gonna do that, so it'll be an all-day event, they're gonna have some entertainment, they'll come in and play. And, you know, we're trying to really start to promote more stuff on that line, and our pavilion, plus the theater, and hopefully the coronavirus, so, you know, we're, I'm willing to work with anybody on that kinda stuff, they'll contact me, I'd be glad to talk to them about anything. We've got some great facilities, and we need people to see them, and we need them to start using them.
Very good. Thank you, Mike.
Chief, um, this past Friday night, our investigative guys took on an endeavor, we got out and did our own alcohol checks, ABC board normally comes in and does some stuff, and, uh, we did our own, we used undercover, uh, adult, I say, eighteen-year-old adult to go in and purchase some alcohol. Out of the twenty places we had time to check, we bought alcohol eight different places, uh, in about a four-hour period here in Fort Payne. Those were primarily convenience stores and a couple of the department stores that we, uh, we have here in Fort Payne. We've not made those arrests yet, those people have a chance to come turn themselves in probably tomorrow, I think, since I was working on them more since day, and we'll do a fresh release on that. But we, uh, we seem to be having a problem with underage, um, alcohol sales in Fort Payne. We're trying to get a handle on that, we've talked about some things in alcohol board, we, and I'm not sure if they'll attend it for the night or not, but, uh, we got some things in mind, and we'd like to educate the business owners in Fort Payne, because ultimately, the person that sold alcohol's gonna be in trouble, and then the business stands the risk of having a fine put on them by the ABC board, so. It's not that we wanna get out and just make people guilty to sell it, we'd like to make some education too, we just didn't know how big the problem was until we got out working this weekend. So we rested eight, uh, eight out of twenty-two folks that we checked, I think, eight out of twenty, I'm sorry, eight out of twenty, so that's a pretty good number. Uh, other than that, we've got, uh, hopefully two scheduled going to the Police Academy starting in May, we were not able to get them into the Jacksonville Academy, so I'm having to send them all the way to sell them, but, uh, it is what it is, so, I think, pull up in Jacksonville, if we can get, if we can get both these young men, they'll go put this out in the academy.
Chief, the, uh, the businesses, was that primarily convenience stores, or?
Yes.
Would you check?
We didn't have a chance to check any restaurants.
No restaurants?
Yeah. We kinda ran out of time, we started at six-thirty and, you know, we had some obligations of, I don't know, ten-thirty, eleven o'clock, we had.
In the future, you expect to check some restaurants?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
I believe the ABC had been in maybe a week or two prior and done some restaurants, if I understand right.
Yeah, they did a couple, and we don't do things exactly like they do. They come do kinda sometimes in the daytime where alcohol sales is not real prevalent in Fort Payne, so we did a evening time thing, it was like, we're catching more folks.
Well, that's good work, that is a problem, uh, you know, that we need to address, and I appreciate the work you guys are doing there.
I bragged on our investigators a couple of weeks ago, I don't brag on them, again, those guys that took that project on, and we just didn't know how big it was gonna be, because we looked at some old case files, I think the most we've ever had in one night was four, and we ended up with eight the other night, that was a pretty big night, a long paperwork time for us. They done good job.
And you kinda mentioned a dilemma that we may face with the task force, uh, the agency in, in Montgomery wanting those vehicles back.
We, uh, we were informed by ADEC, I sit on the task force board myself, Sheriff Harris, and, uh, Mike O'Dell from the District Attorney's Office. We sit on the task force board, and do some paperwork glitches and some stuff, I guess, maybe not being done right in the past by, uh, someone. We stand to lose some vehicles, uh, right now, we've got four, five vehicles, five vehicles, kinda on loan from the task force that are assigned to our police department. Those guys, two of them actually call regularly, one of them's a full-time agent, uh, one of them does some interdiction work, which is getting out on the interstate, looking for trucks and stuff like that that could possibly be hauling drugs, and one of them's just on loan just because we just didn't have enough vehicles at that point in time. But we stand the risk of, uh, to lose, uh, maybe three vehicles, we're not sure yet, we had a meeting today, and they're kinda finalized what they're gonna take from us. It's not because we did anything wrong, it's just because ADEC changed some rules, and they had some people change positions down there, so now they're kinda looking to take back some stuff. Uh, we've accumulated a lot of stuff as a task force, and, uh, we're gonna offer them up several vehicles maybe to get back, and we hope that they won't take anything that we use on a everyday basis, but they might, so just kinda letting you know. We stand to lose three vehicles of what we got on our first line vehicles that our guys drive every day, Matt Wilson, one of them. Matt kinda works dual duty, works for us, and then sometime he gets out and works on interstate a lot. Uh, Andy Harrington and Mike Grant are part-time investigators with us, but they're, they're assigned to the task force, haven't been for a long time, they still answer calls every other week for the task force. Uh, Tony Dorsett's our full-time drug task force agent, hopefully he won't lose his, and, uh, we have one on loan that I investigated a bit, and that was an extra vehicle, and we replaced the guy on the task force, we didn't have anything for him to drive, so they were gracious enough to loan us, so we stand the risk of losing them.
So that's a possibility of three more vehicles on top of schedule budget to annual purchases, what are you gonna be thinking about?
We've been real lucky to be able to use those vehicles, and, and, and Daryl Collins, uh, was able to provide us with those things over the years, and, uh, they just changed people in Montgomery, they're screwing the screws down on people now out of the field and taking away some stuff that they're not using and stuff, decided in the proper places, so. It's kinda what it is.
We got about ninety-two in that we, that the vehicles hadn't been delivered, but we purchased three for ninety-two that we had scheduled in, so we're gonna look to see if we can find something on the state bid list, maybe that'll, maybe a little bit cheaper rather than trying to buy three additional new vehicles. I think we had three on the roster for next time also, so, uh, just FYI to let, you know, you guys know we're probably looking for some more vehicles if they decide to come and remove those, so. And we hadn't received receipt on the, on the three vehicles that we ordered yet, have we?
We got word this afternoon that they're there, and we're gonna try to make arrangements to get a check and go down and pick those up on Friday.
Okay.
Randy, have you, uh, got any word on the autopsy of, uh, Ms. Mitchell? The one that got, was the hit and run?
Yeah, I think, I think we discussed it, maybe a week or two ago that they're in, that we, I tell you.
We got the one in on the, on the hatchet man.
If, if we talked about the, the Putin gentleman, then maybe the, uh, Mitchell's not in yet. I'll just have to double-check with the investigators, because sometimes they get stuff back there that I, I just don't know about.
Okay.
Four or five of them, and sometimes they don't tell us stuff, uh, that they get in. So I'll check with, uh, Mike and the one that, sure enough, let you know.
All right, thank you.
Um, winding down our Springer Creek School, which we have three recruits in, if they take their final exam and, uh, graduate on the twenty-ninth this month. So we got, uh, eight total in, we dropped one, add nine, and we got eight, so we'll graduate eight out. I still have an open slot, uh, for employee fire department, I have to have a drill, I have to have anybody can't afford it, still searching. I wanna update you on our, uh, fire engine purchases, they're coming right along, they're still projecting June delivery date. Uh, I've got my doubts on June delivery date based on that they haven't contacted us to order any equipment for the, for the vehicles yet, so I hope June, June's still doable for them, but I should hear something from them first of May. Uh, they put me off two times to come sit down and have a meeting, and it's gonna take about a whole day for them to decide what kind of equipment we want on this, this piece of equipment, and the price of equipment's in the, in the bid as well, so, um, other than that, we'll look at it. All right, thank you. Okay? The end of the view. All right. Thank you, guys.
Next, we have, uh, this is second big name. Okay, approve the accounts, payments of the accounts.
Motion that we ratify payments of the account?
Sure.
Got a motion from?
Walter and Second from Red that we ratify the payments, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Same from my supply.
Motion carried.
Okay, on to business. First thing we have under citizen participation is to set a public hearing, uh, to receive comments on a proposed rezoning of nineteen acres located on thirty-eight oh-one Green Hill Boulevard. Uh, it would be zoned, let's see, from C four to R L. rural farm district. Uh, gonna set that meeting for the council meeting of May the seventeenth.
Questions?
Planning commission has approved it, it's just, uh, the reason why it's set the public meeting that far out, it has to be published twice in a local newspaper, the last publication will be fifteen minutes prior to the public hearing.
Motion in second.
Got a motion from Randall?
Sure.
Second from Red, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, new business. We have a board appointment, Kathy Prater's term on the Fort Payne Board of Education expires in June. Any discussion?
I think we had a, uh, a really good set of interviews, we had some really qualified people, uh, to apply this time.
Six apply?
Six, and it's, it's good to, to see that kinda quality group, you know, step up willing to serve, uh, so that was, made the decision, you know, a little tougher, but, uh, those kinda things we wanna have, hard decisions on, and have that many good applicants, so I was really pleased about the, about the quality of the applicants.
Well, I, I definitely enjoyed it. I think, uh, because we do interview now, it's, it's kinda, it's more open, you know, I think that's something that we, we've been talking about, let's interview, you know, everyone, uh, I think, I think Kathy's done a good job, uh, I mean, she here, she's here tonight, and she adds to, I mean, I had a good time watching Kathy and with her excitement about being on the school board, you know, so, uh, I, I think she's done a good job. It's a tough decision, I know this will be, uh, uh, another term for her, but I think to make, keep things kinda stable, and they're moving forward really nicely, it'd be good if we could allow her to, to wrap up, uh, some years of getting things done, so, uh, I'm glad that, uh, we had the opportunity to have a good candidate go back on, so. I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, put Kathy back on for the, for another term.
I'll second that.
We have a motion from Walter and a second from Randall that we, uh, put Kathy Prater back on the board, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Was that an nomination?
That's, you can do it the way you do it.
Okay.
You wanna make a speech?
Well, I'm gonna do it, I'll do it on her behalf. I'm gonna step down from my position as a member, as the lawyer for the city, and I'm gonna step into my position, uh, as the lawyer for the school board, and on behalf of the Fort Payne City Board of Education, and I know that we're, every one of them will echo what I'm fixing to say, we thank you for sending her back to us, she's a great asset to that board, uh, and besides that, she voted to hire me, and I love her.
Thank you, Kathy. I know you're doing a great job, as always.
She is, she is.
Okay, next we have consideration for appointing Mike Griggs to the Alcohol Committee. John Pyron, uh, has resigned from that committee. Uh, any discussion on this?
Yeah, I think this is just a natural fit, you know, Mike handles just about all that stuff for us, uh, anyway, so he's got a, a great knowledge of what's going on there, and, and knows the ordinance, knows what can be done, what can't be done, so I, I would, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Mike Griggs to the Alcohol Committee.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion from Randall and a second from Red that we appoint Mike Griggs to the Alcohol Committee, uh, all those in favor?
Aye. They're really clear.
Opposed?
I agree with Red on that.
You agree with Red?
I agree with Red on that. I agree with you on that.
Okay. Next is to authorize issuance of an off-premise beer and wine license to Suns Country Cooler located at eleven fifteen Green Hill Boulevard, that's the former Mount Co., the Alcohol Committee has, uh, approved this request.
That's the one up by the north entrance to I-59?
Right across from Don Hunscher.
Yeah, yeah.
The old Shell station.
Okay.
Shell station had, had the same type of license, and they chose not to renew their lease, and this gentleman, uh, took it up and just sent the request in the same type of license.
Is Suns Country Cooler a convenience store?
It's a convenience store.
Motion approved.
Motion from Red, second from Walter that we, uh, issue this license, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Next, we have a street light request at fifteen oh-two New Oregon Drive.
I did go look, this is extremely dark out there, the closest to street light is, uh, I think Church, this is about a quarter mile, I believe, maybe not a quarter mile, you know, somewhere like that, it's dark out there, so I said that was a question.
It's a traffic problem.
For those folks who live on that road, you know, if you live on that road, you're gonna bid to somebody, you have to put it.
It's, uh, that's, if you're not familiar with it, it's a dead-end street, and it's pretty well out in the country out there, and it's dark, I'm making a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Got a motion from Red, second from Randall that we approve this request, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
While we're doing that, uh, there's one up there right across from the New Oregon Church that, uh, we've had a lot of complaints about, because of glaring and somebody's wedding and everything, but it's the whole light. If we put a LED down here at Paula's and change that light out, I think that'll solve that fellow's problem.
Are you not moving, don't you?
So we're just replacing the existing?
Yeah, replacing the existing light with LED, we hadn't got out there that far yet, but if they go out to put one up, might as well do the other one.
Yeah, the new one will be an LED, so they may go ahead and change that one out while we're there.
Randy, the, the one that we're doing here, uh, for Paula, is there any other areas that may be dead-end, dark corners in the town that may surface from this?
I'm sure they had, or will be, but, you know, we hadn't had a, had a request in a long time, we, we turned some down, but I looked at those, and they wasn't even needed for some of them, so, uh, you know, most of those would've been security lights in a yard, basically what people wanted, but this is actual home street, so, you know, she doesn't have a pole in her yard out, I told her that's what she needed to get, you know, whatever, but it's dark out there on that road, it's extremely dark.
Okay.
The fellows changing out the LED lights are also removing some where we've got too many, and they're also looking at the areas that we don't have enough, so maybe that'll work itself out.
The only place we've been removing any is on Main Street so far, we've been reluctant to remove any in front of houses, even if there are a lot of them. Other than that, uh, there's a couple more places that Rainy and I've talked about that we might be able to take a couple down, and who knows, we could put up in other areas if people request them.
Yeah, I think that was part of the plan when we, when we started this, is we realized, we, we thought pretty certain that there were gonna be areas that where we could, you know, where we had lights on every pole.
Right.
Uh, where we could maybe skip a pole in between, especially with these lights, that, that gives so much better light. I know, uh, you know, it's, it's daylight and dark difference between the old lights and the new lights, so.
Yeah, it's, it's totally different. We have had a, a one person that called and said there was too many on his street, and we could take one down in front of the house.
Yeah, yeah.
We, we did that. Uh, what we're trying to do is, uh, on the intersections, where we're putting the smaller lights down the street, we'll go up one side at all the intersections, and that seems a, a, a bit, gives more light, as, as you pull out into highways.
What's the latest count, you know how many we have up right now?
Uh, at least seven fifty, but it could be a little more.
Very good.
Good start.
Yeah. Lot quicker than I thought.
Yeah.
The whole light brightened Thursday, Saturday, wasn't it?
Yeah.
I don't know if I've gone.
It was really, really nice, it looked.
Hard traffic.
I, I could see it from Tennessee.
Could you see it from Tennessee, that bright, yeah?
Whether it was in bright enough.
Okay, next we have activity permits, uh, One World Adventure and Fort Payne Main Street fundraiser, Ron?
Good with both of them.
I guess not gonna, uh, this is not gonna interfere with the bike night, but it's talking about that.
It's not, it's actually, I think it's gonna help us, it's 'cause I think it's gonna draw more people.
Okay.
And I encouraged her to tell the vendors and folks, you know, they were planning on leaving at two, and I said, hey, tell us that.
Yeah.
You know, we won't, I'm hoping it's gonna draw more people in, and, and make it that respect.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure it wasn't interfering. I'd like a motion to approve.
Second?
Both.
Motion?
Second.
Second that we approve both of these permits, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mister President, if I could say, we, we, we kinda, we're not trending away from bike night, but we're doing a thing, basically free concert on, on fourth Saturday afternoon to try to draw people down there. We're gonna include the bikes too, but I was looking in the newspaper this past weekend, where Gaz is doing a thing at amphitheater every weekend of their first Friday night, and they encourage people to bring coolers and cushions to the amphitheater, enjoy free concerts, and they've got some good talent lined up down there. So we would like to encourage y'all to try to pass the word and spread the word and get folks, you know, try to come. It's not just a bike thing, it's not just a bunch of motorcycles, it's for people all over town, anybody up, you know, from either side of the mountain, just come, just come listen to some music, and, uh, just hang out and have a good time. We've been real successful at having any problems with that program at this point.
All right.
Just wanna throw that out.
Next is, uh, discussion about authorizing Clark Parker to apply for a year-round alcohol license for the Colan Iron Building.
We've talked about this, I think, from times past, you know, we have various and sundry events that take place up there, and it is a royal pain to get an alcohol license for each individual event. The expense of it, the cost of the insurance, the cost of the license itself, it would be much better if y'all were in agreement with it, for us just to have a year-round license for the Colan Iron. We could have the wine tasting at Bloom Days, Russell Gully wants to have something with the radio visions, we could, you know.
What was the reasons we haven't already done that? There's bound to have been a reason.
We do have, we do have a year-round license at the golf course, correct?
Currently, but we're gonna drop that. We have a year-round license for the golf course, the pavilion, and the, the camp theater.
So we're gonna drop the one at, uh?
At the golf course, yeah. Mike and I have talked about it, I, we see no reason not to have the, the year-round license.
Right, right now, we're just getting individual each time we're having an event down there?
You talking about at the golf course?
No, at the, at the Colan Iron Building.
What did you ask?
I guess I'm just, I just wonder why we haven't already done this, if there, if there was maybe a reason that we're not thinking about, or?
Well, when we started out with Bloom Days, the wine tasting, and it was at Hunt Hall, and I think, wasn't there some issues last year or two with that, so we're gonna move that down to the Colan Iron Building. And we've had requests, you know, during the course of the year to have events at the Colan Iron Building, and, you know, we have to have those very limited restrictions, tight restrictions rather, on, on what you can do to have alcohol in Colan Irons, and this is just kinda, you know, open it up a little bit for us, under, under Mike's control.
I've been negotiating with several people about having some wine tasting events in there, and also bringing some microbrew people in to have that, to showcase that facility, because it is a terrific facility, all that kinda stuff, and with the thing that Russell does, to be honest with you, uh, I'd like to start promoting it for people, we wanna do wedding receptions and other things in there that I think would enjoy that, that building, and it's just, you know, we need to, you know, we need to be, we, I have got some chairs and stuff in there, but we need to get that thing suited where if somebody wants to have a wedding reception, there's gonna be a hundred fifty people there, we need to be able to, them to do that in, and by us bringing in the alcohol license, that will allow us to go ahead and do that.
And it would allow us to have control of it.
Right, and control of it.
Oh, would it? Maybe it's a little off-subject, but is the country club doing anything now apart from renting?
Yeah, yes, yes, yeah, it's, I think we are ahead of schedule on our rental, plus the golf is, is really picking up, yesterday was one of the biggest days that they've had in quite some time, we had the league play yesterday afternoon, plus we had, I forget how many, uh, golfers we had yesterday, today's the big day.
There's a bunch of cars in the parking lot yesterday.
Yeah, there's, if you go by now, just about, you're gonna see several folks out playing golf, and.
With the rental on the?
Rental, the rental is, the pool fix has opened up here in the next month and a half, uh, uh, you know, we've, we've, we've got a little bit of renovation we need to do for the bathrooms on the inside, because we may have, we have some large groups over there, but it's, uh.
Chief, Parker, Parker Parker was mentioning dropping the city alcohol license there, is that?
Well, the people, the people that rent that, Red, they, it's typically wedding receptions and reunions and things of that nature, and they don't buy enough alcohol to justify the cost of having a license and the insurance and the supplies that you have to have. They typically, it, it, as y'all know, with our esteemed fellows in Montgomery have told us that you don't have to have a license if you meet certain qualifications, one of which, no money changes hands, it's limited in attendance, those are the two main things, and that's primarily whatever event that, that is at the country club consists of. It's either a reunion or a birthday party, something like that, and they have beer, wine, champagne.
So dropping the alcohol, the city alcohol license, or it wouldn't prevent people from providing their own?
No.
Okay.
I'm gonna make a motion that we authorize the clerk to apply for this year-round license.
Got a motion? Motion from Randy? You have a second?
Second.
Got a second from Walter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Mr. Mayor, I think everybody is aware that Dunham Sports is opening Friday morning. There'll be a ribbon cutting ceremony at nine o'clock. We've been waiting on this for a good while, and so as many as can come out. I've been talking with retail strategists about several things, and they got some prospects. I don't know how good the prospects, but they're working on about four different ones, so hopefully we'll get one or two out of that bunch.
Mayor, are they looking for something at the Ryan's Building?
Yes, yes, they've actually got two different folks that they're talking to about the Ryan's Building, so maybe one of them will work out. I had a request from the Experimental Aircraft Association out at the airport to help them provide a defibrillator for the airport. Uh, they are willing to pay half of whatever it costs. I asked Don, I believe we talked about it, I don't think we've ever bought one. We've got them through different venues. What does one actually cost? Do you know?
One like that would probably be around thirteen, fifteen, I'm sorry, around.
So anyway, they, they asked us to, or they asked me to bring it up before the council, see if the council was willing to participate on with that. They did not know the price of one at the time, so I'd get back and tell them it may be more than they wanted to, but I don't know. So I guess the question is y'all wanna do that or not?
They would pay half of it?
Uh, yeah, I think if you, if you go back to them, they're, and you tell them what the price is, and they're willing to, to still go half on it, I, I, I wouldn't have a problem at all with that, so much you guys, I think that'd be fine.
Yeah, yeah, we'll really come up with that at the airport.
It's, and actually, they want it in the terminal building itself. I mean, they're not gonna put it in their little area that they've got down there, they won't put it in terminal building for anybody.
In a public area.
They want?
In a public area.
Yeah, yeah. All right. Uh, we talked, budget adjustment, I guess, or something?
Yeah, there's a few reasons to amend the airport for, you know, some of that stuff.
Okay. Okay, we talked some time back about recycling containers and waste containers in the city parks. Anybody given any more consideration to that?
Yeah, I think we're just waiting to find out what kind of money we're talking about.
All of the prices or something.
Yeah, somebody's gonna get it.
Matter of fact, John, I met with John last week, and we discussed what kind of containers, what size, and that type of stuff, and, you know, it was kind of funny, the difference in the price range on what they charge you for a recycling can compared to a regular can. So he was gonna look at a couple of things, maybe some smaller size, thirty gallons or something along that line, but, you know, it's, we're getting to the point where, you know, especially with things kicking off and making their thing else, you know, I, uh, so that's kind of, I left it with him, so.
Did y'all discuss anything about the dog waste and those type?
I, I didn't with him, you know, I think, I mentioned to you that I think we've come to the point now in our parks where you have so many pet owners, you know, we designated our parks to be pet-free, but that's just not working even with signage, whatever. I think we need to look into putting stations in our parks that have the stations where they can have the hoop bags and the cans to dispose of it in, because we'll get a lot of traffic off thirty-five. People will drop out there, get out with their dogs, and walk around. A lot of those people are pretty good about tending to it, but I think if we had stuff out there far, people would use, they would use it, and, you know, we, there's all kinds of it to buy.
Okay.
At that point, we just changed the policy to be pet-friendly, I guess.
Yeah, I think we're gonna have to do that, because I can't, you know, I, it's, you can't monitor it, there's no way, because there's so much traffic, especially down in the walking park, in City Park, I mean, it's, even though we've got signs, big signs up, no dog, whatever, they still call it.
You know, another option, guys, on, on these recycling containers, and I guess this would be an option, you know, we've got a, we've got a pretty top-notch steel manufacturing plant here in Fort Payne, and I don't know if you've seen any of the fire pits and that line of products that they're starting to build now. They're really nice. Uh, that might be an option that we could talk to those guys about maybe building us some containers. They can powder coat them, they can do everything, you know, all the things that we would need done, so, and I, I think we could save a whole lot of money.
Well, on the containers, I told John, I said, why can't we just buy some thirty-gallon cans with some lids and screw the tops down, cut a hole in the top, the dimension of a can, and put some stickers on it that says aluminum on the, plastic on the glass on it. Now, you're not, trust me, people won't put regular trash in there, but it would be as hard to sort out, whether we got, who, whether, you know, we can take it to the, you know, we can load it, take it to the recycling place, or we can work a deal with the recycling company to check, but...
I don't know, I, I still think that I would like for these things to look unique.
Right.
To have maybe some type of artwork on them, have, maybe have some kids from the school do some artwork, something like that, where they, where they, they look, where they don't look like garbage cans, you know, that's what I'm getting at.
Two hundred dollars difference between a regular can and a recycling.
Yeah, see, I think we could, we could probably get these built out there for a quarter of that.
Are they made, are they made from the same material?
Oh, see, the fire pits they're doing.
Yeah.
Most of them I've seen were for plastic. I've seen quite a few that were plastic, and they have a place for cans, a place for trash, a place for paper or whatever. Usually they're three, three holes in the same one that I've seen. That's the only ones I've really, really paid much attention to. Don't have a price on any of it.
I'd like the idea of partnering with a local business if we can.
Sure.
Yeah, I can, yeah, I can get you a contact out there, sure can.
Back on the animal thing, is it, has that been a pretty big problem with the dogs in the parks and stuff?
We have a lot of animals in the park. You know, I get calls, people call me, and, and basically what I do, I just turn around and call this park and say, I'm gonna get down, because some, and especially in Alabama Walking Park, we have a lot, a lot of traffic, we have a lot of seniors that walk over there, and sometimes they get a little intimidated when somebody's got a pretty big dog on a leash or whatever coming up through there.
So that's kind of where I was wondering, even, you know, right now we have a no-dog policy, and we have signs up, and even though it's being violated, it may be less of a problem than it would be if we were to go to pet-friendly, you know, you're gonna have more pets and stuff in there, you know, I don't know, we may want to think a little bit about, because like you said, I know some people are intimidated by dogs and stuff, and even though you have some in there now, you know, because you can't monitor it.
I mean, we can leave the signs up, but I still think we need to get the stations where they can.
But see, that's, 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 I guess that's kind of what's making me think, it wouldn't make sense to have a pet-free and then have, then have the stations there.
The problem you have with dogs and stuff in your parks is the feces. That's why you don't want dogs in your public parks where you got people walking and playing, because if a dog goes out there and messes in the grass, then somebody's gonna step in.
Yeah.
So that's why you, you, we have the signs, no pets, because a lot of the pet owners are not responsible for that part of it.
I think we need to stick to what we have. I don't think we need to change it because, you know, because like you said, that, that could be, there's kids just playing around in that, that park, and, you know, I don't want them to attract anything from a dog or cat in the, in the pool and the, in our splash pad over there, you know, I think we need to maintain the parks that are, that we already designate for pets.
They need to stay pet-free, I don't think, even though, even though we're gonna have people violated, it'd still be less of a problem.
If you change it, I think you're gonna encourage more pets over there and, uh...
You're saying we can't, there's, there's nothing we can do on the other end which would be controlled, other than call the officers and get complaints and say, what do y'all do, Randy, when, when?
Just send folks up there and tell them that, and they need to read the signs that there's no pets allowed in that park.
And then what do they do?
Leave them most of the time, you know, but I can't say that every time. You know, and one, responsible pet owners, you know, sometimes they'll read the signs, that park's wide open, you know, there's no borders to it, so, you know, you can get straight out through there too, it covers just as much problems.
I was under the impression that one of our parks was, that maybe Spring Grove allowed pets.
Pet-friendly, yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's what I was thinking. I thought we had one that was, and, and, you know, I, I would say, you know, for sure if that one is pet-friendly, we need to, we need the stations down there, and we need to let folks know that it's that way. You know, I've had people, I've had a lot of people call me regarding no pets in the park, and, and most of them are responsible folks who can't understand why, of course, well, not everybody's responsible. Uh, but I think we need to do a better job and let folks know that Spring Grove is pet-friendly, and, and then go ahead and, and do what we need to do, at least there, to put those stations up.
We had quite a few pets at Third Saturday. Most of them were on a leash. There was a couple in their pocketbook, one of everybody, yeah, they were big dogs.
Some doormen, some pit bulls and stuff like that, which to me, that's, I mean, I, I don't, I don't ever think it's pit bulls, but I think you're in a lot of trouble if you put a pit bull out in the crowd with a whole bunch of people, at least one thing you can set it off.
Especially with other, with other.
They weighed a hundred and twenty-five.
I've seen one of those too.
What do y'all do when y'all see dogs? Like, do we have a policy against that at Third Saturday or Bloom Days?
We don't have anything.
Need to dress for them?
Yeah, I don't think.
Maybe we need to think about that.
It'd be hard for the police, yeah, for Third Saturday, or any of them, long at night. You know, we're able to do it at the complex simply because it's been seen, and we still have, and, you know, a lot of time off then, and they don't pay the loose platter, you know, it's part of their thing, you know, we have to say, just, sorry, we can't have them in.
One of the things I've seen too, at the, at the walking park, there's no pets inside the park, but you got that grass area in front, and I, I see the same thing at the campground. If there's a grass area, that's usually where people stop, let their dog go, you may want to put one of those stations.
Put a station up outside the park right there, maybe. That's, that's a good idea.
Because they, they're probably gonna use it.
They don't, they ain't too.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, they, they always look for grass areas when they pull out.
Okay. All right, we've had an ordinance that we, was proposed, uh, either the last time or time before, concerning the weeds, the mosquitoes and what have you. Has anybody had a chance to look that over and see what you think about it?
I have ordered those mosquito dumps, they call them, donuts, they float on top of it. I didn't realize that, but when you put them in, they say they last usually about two weeks, unless it rains, but they said they will last up to two months if it don't rain, if they're standing water. They're a dollar a piece, so we went ahead and ordered four hundred of them, so it looks like we're gonna need them.
I don't know, the Health Department is also working on spraying these tire piles that are, that are around at these tire stores, and they are required to do it once a month and maintain records of it, et cetera, but what they're required to do is what they do something else, but this was something that Jimmy took from, uh, another city and kind of combined it with something that we already have, so I don't think it needs to be acted on tonight, but I think we may want to put it on the agenda for next time. I think everybody's got a copy of it. Could do that.
Before we move forward, there may be some changes we want to make. I, I don't know.
Let, let's, give us just a little time to look at it, make sure everybody's read it on our own, and then we'll call a work session, we will. You've got a work session scheduled when, or have you? Ain't got anything scheduled?
I don't know.
Okay, I'm gonna recommend that we do one, uh, and that could be part of it. Where's that come? Uh, Andy has a resolution that just came up late this afternoon, has to do with EMA and FEMA. Uh, every five years, we've got to pass a resolution saying that we are a part of their program, so to speak, uh, that I think he's got the information of.
This has to do with reimbursement?
Yeah, it's mitigation primarily through FEMA and any other.
Property by, if there's property, the flood, flood banks that, that'd be removed, this is a method by which that happens for us.
This is basically the same resolution we've always planned.
Yeah, we've had it for five years.
If, if we don't do it, then we aren't eligible for federal funds on it.
It needs to be done to keep you eligible for federal cleanups, you know, there was a time where we bought an awful lot of buildings all along.
Alabama Walking Park is a prime example.
Can't keep that program, you don't face it, you don't have it.
One of the reimbursement projects we're working on, which was Storm at Christmas, is considered mitigation.
All of that kind of stuff, it, it's just, it's just to keep you eligible.
And I'll ask the question, if we don't do this, are we still gonna get that?
Well, there's only one of them that's considered mitigation, but if we don't do that, we won't get that.
That's right, okay.
Let's do that, I'll make a motion if we need it.
You do?
Mm-hmm. Got a motion and a second that we update or make current, the current deal with this thing.
No, you're gonna pass the resolution. That was your motion, right, Walter?
Are you sure about that?
I think so. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, talking about a special session, I would recommend that we have a, a work session to discuss this ordinance that we were talking about, and also discuss this right-of-way work that we've been looking at. Uh, I think we need to settle this issue once and for all, if we can at all. Go ahead and set one for the next Tuesday or?
Sounds good to me.
For the next council meeting?
May the third?
Next council meeting?
Is it May the third?
May the third.
Oh, I'll be gone. I will be gone. Can we, could we possibly do it some other day before then?
I think it's gotta be May the third.
Maybe one call later.
I'll be here in a while, you, so. Do the, do the council meeting?
Who's that?
Seventeenth, was it, seventeenth?
Yes, that's the seventeenth.
Seventeenth, yeah. Okay.
Seventeenth. Five o'clock?
Special session.
Called a work session. Yeah, special. This is called special session.
It's a way.
Get you, if you get you all, don't forget we can get the.
Helicopter.
They, they got a helicopter that'll fly that far?
Is that it, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, yes, except for the personnel, and y'all have that, there's nothing unusual on our personnel report, so I reckon I'm through. All right, well, that's it for the regular agenda. Does anybody from the audience have anything?
One thing I want to bring up, I didn't know if Andy mentioned about what we voted on in the Boarding the Alcohol Committee meeting the other day about mandatory license check.
We're gonna, to, to bring that council up speed, that we, and addressing a lot of different concerns, one of the things that, that is, it's not a part of the state statute, it's not technically part of the alcohol ordinance, but there's a requirement that you cannot sell alcohol to anybody under twenty-one. Well, it doesn't say you have to check everybody's life. Well, because of some events, some of which Randy's talking about, that, that the Alcohol Council, the Alcohol Commission voted last week to actually amend our statute to say, before you sell any alcohol to anybody from any source, you have to look at a government-issued ID. I mean, it's just what y'all do anyway. Most of us who go out of town know that even though I'm a hundred and twelve, I get carded, and, so we're gonna, we're gonna see where that fits, we're gonna draft the language, and we'll have it back to you, I hope, by May the third, from the first reading on that. And then we're probably gonna put something in there, now that Mike's on board, the responsible vendor training, they try and train one person, that person comes back to the local restaurant or whatever and does it, I, we think we're gonna let Mike put together a, a program to meet periodically, maybe once a month or something, and we may want to draft that into the ordinance too, where people have to come in and take not only the state course, but take Fort Payne course to make sure we're getting compliance. I, I, you know, I don't know that we have a terrible problem, eight out of twenty is bad, except basically what you have to do is everybody just gets slapped, and you just have to do things periodically to make sure.
It's easily fixed.
I think it's easily fixed, I think people get curious.
Some of the, some of the business owners and stuff is, is, they're, I don't think they're relaying the message to their employees on how important it is to them, their employee, about checking IDs. You know, of course, there's a lot, there are a lot of young people and everything else who, but they don't understand that they're gonna be charged if they're caught selling someone underage or without a proper ID, uh, and, and I'm not sure they're relaying that message, and I want these business owners to understand the consequences of you not staying on top of this, uh, because anything can happen, then you could be tied to the lawsuit, everything, I mean, everywhere we go now, doesn't matter your age or whatever, they check your ID, and if it's something as simple as your ID has expired, we had that happen to one of our friends this week, twelve days.
What's that? First, for some reason, you don't have a valid ID. There's a reason for that. Probably DUI, probably something, so the thing that I will make sure the business owners know is how important it is that, that you check these IDs.
And I think what happens is when, when you don't have a problem for a while, and we're not running checks periodically, and I think Randy's indicated they're gonna start running checks more often, people just, as a matter of nature, get more lax, they just don't think about it. I don't think we have anybody around Fort Payne saying, I know that guy's a murderer, I'm gonna sell it to him anyway. They're just not, they're just not being careful enough. I, so yeah, I think it's an easily rectified problem, but...
Well, running those checks and then, and then making the public aware of what's happening is a pretty good wake-up call, I would think.
It doesn't take but three or four folks getting arrested, everybody else start to say, hey, we gotta do something about this.
We don't, we're not trying to shut businesses down. We just, we want, we want, we want them running. We want them running efficiently and right.
Yeah, and that training is a good idea too, for the...
Well, it's, it's for the safety of...
The sponsor vendor class, it's, it's all money-driven, you have to go take it. Basically, it's a, it's a, they show you a film, you know, ask you a few questions, then, hey, you have to go. And you pay a little bit extra money to be able to teach classes to, to your other employees. It's what they do, so it's, I think locally, we need to emphasize would be better.
So you, the, the class that you're, the responsible vendor class that you're talking about having here, will it be at no charge? Or will there be a charge?
We'll talk about that.
We'll talk about that, see what it's gonna cost to the alcohol committee, we'll come back to you before it's sued. If, if there was any cost, I would think it would be, this is what it's costing us to do at the airport, we're gonna try to cover our expenses. You're most certainly not gonna be a profit, lady.
Okay.
You know, and I may, I can go around, I'll maybe start going around some of the businesses and talking to them, saying, hey, what are you doing? Are y'all doing everything, complying as you have? You know, just be friendly, you know, try to be, and, and just ask some questions to make sure that, you know, they get signed.
Make sure they know that they're subject to be fined by the ABC board. I don't know.
You know, I, I talked to a wine distributor today at Huntsville, he said, you know, it's just, it's not just us, it's them, honestly, he said, they catch the weed all the time. You know, it's, they're just like, like he says, they're just getting too, they're just getting too relaxed on it.
Well, and, and everybody needs to understand that the people that benefit from this the most are the business owners, because it will avoid an awful lot of problems for them. I mean, if they just do it right, then, then just, if they do it right, sell it right, then they're not gonna get, have lawsuits, they're not gonna have fines, they're not gonna have people arrested. It's, it's, it's a benefit to them in the long run. And what we're trying to do is help them do it right.
Good to me.
All right, then.
All right, well, that's it. We're going to, oh, yeah.
We need a motion. I think that we go into executive session to discuss real estate, possible real estate transaction.
I'll vote.
Are you covering us tonight?
Bradley is, Bradley Roberts, he's gonna take Huntsville's place.
Okay, Bradley. He's got some big shoes to fill.
Yeah, why are you, why are you sitting back there, Bradley? You go be up here, front and center.
I told him to be scared.
Okay, be scared. Walter?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, we are in executive session.
You can tell if this is not Rainsville, he can come back.
Yeah, we don't throw things.
No chairs.